She didn't even give me a chance to look at it. It is six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. Plan Commission, first item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Schnelly.
Here.
Molson.
Here.
Smithback.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Dan Campton.
Here.
Polda.
Here.
And we have Meyer and Mar and Majewski out tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Wait, Beano, Beano.
Oh, Beano, yes, thank you. Next item is approval of minutes of October third, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a second? We have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries, thank you. Moving on to public appearances, the first item is community input. Members of the public are invited to provide information to the Plan Commission, including items both on and off the agenda. That allows the Commission to receive information and also ask questions of the presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. However, we cannot guide you or give you any response other than where to go from here after that. Anybody who wants to speak on anything other than what's on the agenda might be later? Okay, we're gonna move on, thank you. Communication, miscellaneous business, none. New business, item seven eight for discussion only, update on draft of the two thousand twenty-four downtown master plan review, preliminary design concepts presented by the Village of Oregon consultants, Kristin Fish-Petersen of Redevelopment Resources and Ashley Server of Studio GWA. Thank you. Welcome ladies.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Kristin Fish-Petersen with Redevelopment Resources. I'm going to go through the beginning of the presentation. We had some data gathering that we did. So we'll summarize the data gathering. And I'm gonna go through these slides fairly quickly. I think they were in your packet.
Yes.
And so we'll review them quickly and then Ashley will go over the concepts. So we use a data tool called Placer AI and that tells us what the trends are in downtown visitor data. This slide is really interesting because it shows peaks in your visitors. We saw a peak on June twenty-third and a peak on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Those, that was Summer Fest. We've seen, you know, and then you can look at the lower points, those might be holidays or bad weather days, but this is just a very interesting, you have a lot of people that come through the community on Summer Fest weekend. Hourly visit traffic, this is a chart just depicting when you're busiest from in time of day comparing twenty-three to twenty-four. Looks like your midday and then your evening, early evening are the busiest times. Visitor traffic by day of week, Friday is a busy day, Saturday is a busy day, but they're all strong. So I think, you know, we wonder about Monday, but are restaurants and stores closed on Monday because there's no traffic or is there no traffic because the stores are closed? So it's always a good question. We did a community survey online, we promoted it on through social media. The community survey was open from June eighth to July twenty-fifth and we had four hundred and fifty-eight complete responses, which we believe is a very solid response rate. This is a word cloud saying what, we asked people, what do you like most about downtown? Coffee, small shops, restaurants, the downtown feel. Triangle Park is always a popular, we learned how much your community loves Triangle Park. So of the survey, we wanted to summarize forty-five percent were age thirty-five, of the respondents were thirty-five to forty-nine years old and forty-three and a half percent were over fifty years old. This is probably representative of your population or of the people who would respond to surveys. So there might have been fewer younger people because they don't take the time to respond to surveys as much as the demographics thirty-five plus do. Fifty point seven percent had children under the age of eleven, of eleven while forty-one point one percent didn't have any children living in their household. Takes most people about five minutes to get downtown and most respondents visit downtown multiple times per week, dining, recreation and just driving through were the most common interactions. Some key things missing from the area when we asked, we asked people what's missing that you would want to have in downtown Oregon? They said specialty retail, experiential retail and sit-down restaurants as the top three. Ranking the following priorities from most to least important, vibrant destination was the highest ranked, followed by economically successful. So people want stores to stay open and be, you know, have spaces filled with stores that are staying open and are successful. We also attended two of the municipal band concerts and two of your summer concert series as well as art fair and National Night Out and we asked people who would talk to us three quick questions because we didn't want to take a lot of their time. And so we had a hundred and eighteen total responses from those surveys when we asked them those three quick questions. One, the first question was what's the best thing about downtown? Again, Triangle Park, the community, the bands, the, just the small town concerts, friendly summer business, just good feeling stuff. Then we asked, what do you wish downtown? I wish downtown had a blank. A lot of people talked about parking, more stores, retail space and restaurants. The last question was what's the biggest challenge facing downtown? And again, parking was the biggest challenge. We did hear, I don't know if it's reflected here, but we did hear quite a few people wanting an access to a public restroom. I don't see that on here, but I heard that a few times and the porta potty was right there, so we always directed them to that nice porta potty that you had. Then we did a resident survey, so we sent a postcard to all the residents that live within a quarter mile of what we defined as our study area. And we sent the postcard to, directed them to a QR code and we had a hundred and twelve people respond to that survey. We asked what category, age category best estrides them and again, age thirty-five to forty-nine and then over sixty-four were the two highest response categories. If you have children living in your household, what are their age groups? Most of the people don't have children or they're older than eighteen years old. How long have you lived at your current address? I was surprised by this one, I thought there would be more long-term residents living downtown, but it appears that there are people who live twenty-one to thirty years downtown, but mostly just a shorter time, zero to five years. Do you or your family own or rent your home? Most people own, but we did get some renters, which is always a good thing, it's hard to get renters to respond to surveys like this. Where to conduct most of your work? And that would look like people are going to Madison for that. But second, two within the Village of Oregon. If you were visiting Oregon for the first time, what would be your first impression of the downtown? The small size and limited offerings, parking issues, quaint and cute aesthetic, underutilized potential and historic and inviting atmosphere. I love the underutilized potential, it just says, we can do more, we can be better. How often do you visit downtown Oregon? Then we had multiple times per week or daily as the top answers. Kind of interactions do you currently have? Those people obviously live nearby, but they would also have dining and recreation and shopping as their top events. What are some key things missing from the area? Again, we're just trying to figure out what would be, what do people want downtown? So sit-down restaurants, specialty retail and more outdoor events were the top answers. What prevents you from shopping downtown? The selection of goods and services are not of interest to me? And then we did have the list of other, those answers will be in the final report. Didn't summarize them for you tonight. What do you like most about Oregon's downtown today? The walkability and accessibility, the small town charm, the local businesses, community and events, greenery and outdoor spaces, preservation of historic character and the safe and peaceful environment. A lot to like. Please rank the following priorities from most to least important for the future of Oregon's downtown. Vibrant destination, again, that was key in the community survey and it came up the same in this one, so. And then economically successful and preserving that historic character is the other top answer. Would you feel, would you welcome new development in or near the downtown? And most people would, but it depends on the development. So cautiously optimistic. If new development was proposed in the downtown, what would the height, what height of the building would you find most favorable? And most people, well, this was an emphatic two to three stories. There was a small percentage though that said they don't want any new development, so just wanted to call that out. What do you think should happen to the Old Village Hall? And we did ask as many people as we could this question in casual conversation, most people want to see it as a mixed-use development, but they want it preserved and restored. A few people want it demolished and redeveloped. Some people thought a community and cultural space or they just weren't sure. Is having government and civic facilities located downtown important to you? There was strong support for a central location, other people really were just not, they were indifferent, but there was some people that had regret over the relocation and there were definitely mixed opinions about that. I think that the people who are passionate, we heard from them, that it was a mistake to move it out here, but it's done, so. I think you have a beautiful library and it's a great facility and this building is serving you well as well, so. And I'll touch on something later when Ashley's talking about that. Then we met with downtown business owners in a meeting on July ninth and the top issues were, I'd say we had about fifteen business owners in the room, parking, traffic patterns and walking routes were issues, coordinating events with business hours, outdoor seating is difficult for people with mobility challenges. Complementary businesses that drive foot traffic were desired, using the former Village Hall as an expanded fire station would not draw retail customers downtown, so this idea was not popular among business owners. Green spaces are popular and adding an interactive fountain was of interest. We also had a meeting with residents. When we sent the postcard to get them to respond to the survey, we invited them to a meeting because we really wanted to hear from them and walk downtown with them. People thought, and this was on August twenty-second, again, we had about fifteen people there. Regarding the senior center, they were interested in mixed use. Would be nice to have handicap accessible showers, a library book drop, concerns about the cost of operating and maintaining the community gym were voiced. And it would be nice to have the community rec classes held there. Preference to rehab the Old Village Hall rather than tear it down from the resident group, no desire for a parking ramp. Remove the existing parking and expand Triangle Park for more events, which is interesting because this is, we heard, you know, removing parking, the residents were saying remove the parking, but other people who visit the downtown are saying there's not enough parking, so.
It's a real contrast between wanting to provide more vibrant space and more businesses and buildings with having those places to park, so it's definitely a balance here throughout it and you'll see how we've tried to accommodate that within some of these concepts we'll present.
Yeah, I think parking is, there's always a perception that it's worse than it actually is, is what I've found, so. Would be nice to have food trucks, could there be an ice rink? Could we flood a part of the downtown and have an ice rink in the winter? Janesville Street intersection could have, could have all walking signs at the same time and then vacant restaurants need to be filled with niche restaurants. We did stakeholder interviews, we talked to Gorman, the school district, Lake Stone Properties, Oregon Community Bank, the Fire and EMS District, Tri-North and private property owners and business owners. And I think this is where I hand it off to Ashley.
Yeah, and I'll walk us through our concepts here, but feel free Kristin to chime in on some of these other aspects because a lot of the conversations that we've had have informed the concepts here. So the concepts we're gonna walk through again are informed by everything we heard from residents, business owners and other folks prior to really working on these. But it is also based on our expertise and recommendations as well as what we see for best practice in other communities. And so this is just kind of our opening map, you see the red is our study area and the circle shows you from downtown that that is a five-minute walk for most people. So when we're talking about parking and how far things are away from each other, just keeping in mind that most things are within a five-minute walk from at least the downtown center. And what we really like to dive into when we're looking at downtowns, especially historic downtowns, is looking at what history first did. So this is an old map, it's a Sanborn map of downtown Oregon. And we can see, you know, this kind of informed a couple of things for us, a lot of those pinkish buildings on South Main Street are still very well intact and then part of your historic district as it is. But there's a couple gaps from what this shows currently to how things are now. And so some of our recommendations are actually going back closer to this urban form where we would have a strong corner at, well, they called it West Street then, but on Jefferson now, Jefferson and Main and both on the northwest and the northeast corners, looking at that for opportunities for additional buildings to really anchor those corners. It's really quite important, especially in the urban form, to feel like you're in, trying to create this room that feels comfortable. And so having those defined corners is part of that. So we'll look through a couple of the concepts, but the images on the right just show when those buildings were still intact, the upper right, and you can see kind of those hard corners. Of course, the memorial there, Soldier's Memorial as part of that plan and as we work through Soldier's Memorial, we have maintaining in its current place and state, just has come up a lot in conversation as being very important to residents. Some folks were okay with the idea of maybe relocating it. In our plans, as shown, we have it maintained in the same place, but that it has a home somewhere.
Could I interrupt you on that slide? Because I was confused what the colors meant. Now, I understand from your talk, pink is historic.
Oh.
But the yellow and the blue?
Yeah, so in this historic map, this was actually done for fire insurance purposes, so they delineated the colors based off of the construction type. So the pink just indicates a different probably masonry and wood frame versus something else maybe of concrete or different construction type. So it's not really something we delineated to indicate anything, it's just a historic marking.
Okay.
So from there, and part of the boards we had at the meetings, it was really fun and interactive, we had folks give us circles and dots to indicate what they really liked and what they thought was a challenge and that informed the data that we have here, but also the sites that we selected. So some people talked a lot about Village Hall, others about the Triangle Park, so we use that as the base of our discussion for opportunity sites. So we have ten opportunity sites, you see it covers a good portion of the downtown area and as we work through those, we'll share those ideas. The strongest that we really focused on was opportunity site one, that's Triangle Park and the downtown main intersection, just because it is such a focal point of the downtown area. So moving left to right, and I know this is a, you have it on your screens as well, right? So hopefully you can zoom in a bit. So from moving left to right, we have three options basically and they are more intensive as you move right. The site on the left really is minimal changes and this is kind of our low-hanging fruit for consideration, which is keeping, keeping the parking as it is, but introducing a curbless pavement so that we could have a blend from the grass at Triangle Park into the parking lot and add some street trees along that southern edge to help delineate that space, make it feel again more like an enclosed room. And most of the time that parking lot could be used for parking, but maybe there's some special events that you want to close it down and it could still be kind of a natural expansion of Triangle Park into that area. And we also introduced the idea of change in pavement for the rest of the street around it, again, as a curbless approach. So this is an indication that, you know, for drivers that this is, I'm approaching something important and I need to slow down. And also for pedestrians that this is a more comfortable space to move between the south side of Janesville to the north side and Jane, to Triangle Park and the other businesses on North Main. We added a restroom facility as an option or a suggestion, I should say, just north of the bandshell. And you'll see that the former Village Hall is maintained and you'll see the introduction also of a corner building at North Main and Jefferson there. We'll talk a little bit more about that, that's technically our opportunity site seven. Currently it's a grass lot, very nicely landscaped with the BMO Harris sign, but there's an opportunity for a nice building addition on that corner. If we go to the middle one, again, just a little bit of an intensification of the last, it's mostly all of the same with the addition of a few buildings onto the site, which would kind of anchor that corner. And that southernmost building that's really facing the bandshell, you really could do a really nice opportunity of doing an outdoor dining or outdoor porch, it could be one or two stories. You could picture folks, you know, eating dinner and having a beverage while still enjoying the show or still enjoying the green and introduction of a water feature right central within that. And it still maintains some parking, it's of course eating into the existing parking some, but still permitting some on that north side of the lot, again, with that curbless approach to blend nicely between those two areas. And then on the third, it's very similar to the second, except it's a flip where the building is anchoring that southeast corner. So as you're driving down Janesville, you have the Tin Man on your left and you have, you know, a strong corner building there on the corner and it just flips the bandshell to still being on the, but on the north side of the lot. So it is a bit more intense, but also offers a different experience for folks to be able to still enjoy events at Triangle Park. Next slide, please. Oh, I should point out just a couple of the photos down below, those are just, you know, to help envision some of those images and design concepts. In the middle, there's a corner building with a turret and I feel like, you know, that's one in a local example here, just a little bit further right there, yep. You know, that building has a really nice corner presence, so that's what we're talking about, of trying to define those corners a little bit better via the building and urban form. We can go to the next slide. This shows a sketch on the left of that most intensive option, that option three for for the downtown core, downtown center. So just visualizing that there's this opportunity to have these buildings have strong corners and have this linear approach into downtown while also still keeping the main features of Triangle Park and that it acts as a civic center. Next slide, please. So this is opportunity site two, this is the former Village Hall, some historic images at the top there as a WPA project. But down below we heard from folks and our recommendation would be to go out to request for proposals for developers for this building. And there's an interest in residential, it would convert well to residential in terms of an adaptive reuse. There's also financing sources out there to help developers do that through historic tax credits. But as a second option, we heard a lot of interest from artists when we were at the art fair and interest in art studios. So if that was an approach that was of interest, we, you could do the lower level, which still has windows and have those be art studios that are open and smaller scale and still do residential above and have either a work live where artists also live there or, you know, open it to any, any other residents. So here we have, sorry, I'm gonna flip there on mine too, so I can see a little better. Yes, so this shows sites four, five and six. Site four is the, the fire department, that area to the north is a potential addition. I know there's conversation about wanting to add on to their current location and there is some site to the north to be able to do that. And whether that's them redeveloping that site or if, if down the line, there's a decision that they need to vacate that space, that building still has potential to either, you know, expand or sit within that existing footprint. But what we did hear from residents and business owners was a concern of traffic passing through the hitching lot and people speeding through there. So whether it's a building addition that would block that connection or if it's a more of a landscaped or curb approach, there's a need and a desire for slowing down traffic in that, in that area.
And that could be an option for a commercial development if the fire department sought a site elsewhere. I have met with the Fire and EMS District and I was candid with them when I said, I don't think the downtown is the best place for them to expand because it's not gonna meet all of their needs, they, they won't have enough space to do what they need to do. They express the need for and a desire for drive-through bays that they can go in one end and out the other, they can't do that downtown. I wouldn't, I'm not, and I, it was hard for me to not, you know, say, I wasn't doing their feasibility study, but from strictly from our perspective about the downtown, the thing that strikes me the strongest about the fire department being there is that we have all of the parkland space that you have there, we have the senior center site, the library site, the post office site, the fire department and Old Village Hall and these are all non-taxable uses in your downtown. And so as downtown redevelopment folks, that's not, that's not the highest and best use for downtown commercial property. So our recommendation would be to allow those properties to transition to commercial uses and find a use for the fire department outside of the downtown. And I did share my opinion with them on that.
Just moving through the, the rest of the sites then, site five is a vacant lot currently, there's an opportunity for new construction, something at the residential or small commercial scale to fit into that location. And then opportunity site six shows the quick trip site. We heard from a lot of folks that there was an interest of, they love the convenience store but don't find the pumps to be necessary, they don't want to lose the convenience. So this shows an option, an opportunity where the convenience store section stays, but the pumps are repurposed and go out for redevelopment to offer additional mixed-use development. We heard from people too that, you know, it's, they had been looking at downtown Oregon for a while for their business and had to wait until something came available. There's just not much for commercial vacancies downtown, so if, even if you wanted to start a business down here, there's very limited options. So these mixed-use development opportunities offer other ways for people to have business downtown.
I did hear that from people at the in-person events that we, where we were talking to folks and more retail was evident in the survey, but from entrepreneurs and people who wanted to open businesses downtown, there just isn't anywhere to go. So our goal in, in this study was to look for more retail opportunities. So all the mixed-use buildings that we're recommending, like Ashley said, and then, and then where can we push the, the limit on the boundaries of the downtown? Something we had in mind.
And then opportunity site seven, there is down- And then Opportunity Site Seven, there is down below. We talked a little bit about that as a corner building at the corner of North Main and Jefferson there. It's a nice grass lot, well landscaped now, but it really could have a stronger, as Kristen said, higher and better use of occupying, having a building occupy that space. Next slide, please. And this shows really just behind that. So this is the BMO Harris, where the BMO Harris Bank currently is. It's a large site. And we understand that the bank has kind of downsized over time. Long-term, you know, this is looking down the road quite a bit. But long-term, this site would be better cert- used as a mixed-use development. And you see that we can fit quite a few different things on here. Having something at least at the street face would be really the strongest recommendation to have something that helps anchor that. But there's also opportunity behind that to do something smaller scale, whether it's residential or, you know, commercial behind that. But once you get off the street face, it makes it much more comfortable to have smaller scale residential tucked back behind there. And I think the, the impact of that image, I would just say is that currently there's one, one building on that, and you can see with a redesign that you can fit a lot of additional space. And these are our, our final Sites Nine and Ten. So these two images show potential for Opportunity Site Nine. This is on South Main Street, just, just south of UW. And really, kind of two different approaches. One approach shown on the left is the demolition of the three houses that are currently there and doing all-new construction. Something that fronts light, smaller scale on the street side. And then doing something a little bit more intensive on the backside closer to the rail. As well as adding some commercial and some residential into this site. On the, on the right is really an, a mid approach where the dark boxes you see there are the current existing houses. And then the lighter gray is adding new construction. So this keeps those houses in place, but provides a concept where you switch those to commercial. Have those B walk-up businesses. They might serve well for, you know, insurance agents, other retail. Sometimes restaurants like to occupy these spaces or more of a bed and breakfast. And then you could still do this, you know, additional development on the backside of it. And provide parking at first floor level within the larger building or utilize the, the surface lot adjacent. And then the final one, this is Site Ten. This is on Janesville Street as you approach downtown. Currently, there's a few houses there. And to do some additional development and hearing neighbors loud and clear on the, the desire for nothing over two to three stories. This is a town, like a walk-up townhome concept. Where it could again front on Janesville Street and have some additional parking in the back of that. And then have an access point that comes off of Park Street. Of course, it would require easements. And with all of these, you know, some of our, some of these sites are within the village's control. And some of them are clearly private development sites. And so in our discussion with residents, it was, you know, this, the village isn't necessarily going to be moving and acting on and, you know, designing and constructing these buildings. It takes a, a connection with private developers as well. But this helps set the vision, you know, of where the community wants to go. So that when someone does come forth with a desire to do development downtown, that there's a little bit here of a roadmap.
And, and this site, these two sites were specifically looked at, not necessarily the, the last one to the far right. But this site on South Main Street, again, speaks to that, where do we expand? Where do we get more retail space downtown? Where does it come from? And this would give us more retail right on South Main Street. For that, the desire for people to have more places to shop and more places to open businesses. And then, and then if you add in residential, you have built-in customers.
And what you don't see visualized, though we have it on our main map, is Site Three, which is the Senior Center Site. Knowing that there's development, people are very excited about that, are excited to see that change. So, we know that that's already in process, but it came up again and again as a, a site of opportunity and a site of excitement for the community. And I believe that's all we have. If there's any additional questions.
More comments than the que- you've answered a lot of my questions, so just a couple comments. I'm glad there was one item brought up in, I think, one of the residential walking tours about, there's, there's a simple thing we can do downtown pedestrian-wise. And that is the walk signal. Press the walk signal, traffic comes to complete stop. Because it is confusing as heck. And you sit there and wait two to three minutes sometimes, and is my light? When am I going to get the walk signal, right? So, I've experienced this. When I lived in Japan, they had this. It worked very well. And the other thing they had was a crosswalk, so a diagonal walk. So to me, that would make a lot of sense. Low hanging fruit, something we could implement at minimal cost. So, that's one thing I'd like to, to endorse. Thank you for your presentation. You've given us a lot to chew on. The aerial views really give a unique perspective that we don't see every day. I agree with you on some infill and trying to create more of a, a space. Like by bookending the downtown would be, would be very good. Regarding the Old Village Hall, I think that does make sense for senior housing. And it brings up, I, I got to be a fly on the wall at, at the August Residential Meeting. We walked through the downtown. And there was some talk about the fire station. And I agree from a tax perspective, it doesn't make, doesn't help us downtown. What I did hear is that they do need to be kind of on the east side for service to Dunn and area communities. And so it came up, I think Tim and I were talking about it. Why, what about actually relocating the fire station to where we're talking about the Senior Center? And you weren't here, Phil, I mentioned this at the September meeting, but I wanted you to hear this. Because I'm concerned that we're moving too quick to solve one need and not looking at the entire puzzle. And I don't know if it makes sense or not, but I really would like us to look at that. When you talk about needing a drive-through bay, that site could accommodate it. And the Senior Center could backfill the existing fire station. So, as I walk downtown on a almost daily basis, that continues to go through my head. And obviously, I don't know what the numbers look like. I don't know. I just think there's a potential. But if we don't look at it, we'll never know. So, I, I wanted to bring that up. I think that's
It's a good thought.
Important. I think that's, oh, the Triangle Park Concepts. If I had to choose an option, I like, I believe it's Option Number Three. Which is the green space. However, parking is the number one topic, right? So my question is, can you create a space that's dual-purpose? You talked a little bit about it with the curbless. But I'm wondering if it was pavement that was painted green. And on certain days, green is off limits to cars, right? And on other days, it becomes parking.
Yeah, there's probably, you know, there's probably an Option Four and an Option Five even of how the parking lot is shown in the, the first option. But then introducing, basically removing the, the green space altogether in Option Three. And making that the parking. You could still have trees and you could still have that nice pavement that blends between. But you would lose a little bit in terms of having the village green, if, if you will. But it's definitely a fourth option on the table of, you know, if that, more of the time is valuable as parking, then that's also an option. The, the thing that we're not showing here, but did talk about when we were looking at the Senior Center, is where do we accommodate parking next? Knowing that it's a concern and it came up a lot at our open house last week. And we have some opportunities just really across the street. At the, the bowling alley lot, as well as the green lot just north of that. Which I would say, most of the time, I, when I've been to the events here, the bowling alley lot is never fully full. It has spaces available there, and then also the green lot could be redeveloped for parking. So, you know, if, if it's really just across the street, I know that may still be a challenge for some. But it offers, again, just a walk across the street, but still providing parking. While hopefully still, you know, being able to provide the green that would serve kind of as a softening factor for the, for the band and for the events down there.
And I just want to clarify, when you talk about opportunity sites, you're just coming in as an outsider and looking at this with no notion of the history, the owners, the desire to sell, correct?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we're looking at, you know, like Krista mentioned. How do we expand the footprint of downtown? And to some degree, just because there has been a request and a demand really showing additional commercial space being wanted and needed. And there's only so many ways to do that when you have a, a smaller downtown area. And we did have, you know, we have had conversations with local developers who've been involved downtown. And I think it was good to know their interest. But our approach to design was really based only on our, our own concepts.
You know, if you give us this, the magic formula to how can we can keep restaurants downtown and keep people from the Village of Oregon patronizing those places. Because that's one of the problems that I see, and it really, it does frustrate me a lot. We have had some nice places here in town that have come and gone. And people go to Madison, and I don't know what the trick is to try to get them to stay here. Because it, it's, they're wonderful places.
Yeah, um, yeah, restaurants tend to be that, that risky, the most risky business, right?
And they've been, when I say nice, they've been nice. I mean, they're very comfortable accommodating, inviting. Can we just put a block in the front on the North End of Oregon and say, can't leave tonight? What's it take? I don't know what it takes. And maybe you, you've been through this a little bit, some downtown redevelopment. And maybe you know some tricks or, or not tricks, I shouldn't say that, but some things that help invite people.
We can put some, some guidelines for that or some ideas into the final report.
Yeah, some, it's something that incentivizes people from the village. I don't want to get too far. We have a, a nice place in this, in the shopping center on the north side of town. It has a very different name. And people don't understand what's in there. It's a nice, comfortable little place. It's a nice place to go in and have a cocktail. Take your children in if you want to, let them play with some art. It's a very great, it's a wonderful concept, but because of the name. You know, but I, it's things like that, that, that we, if we can just get the community to understand where, I don't know if there's, if there's, if we have to educate the community better, how do we do that? And maybe that's not part of what you do, but give some thought to it. Because I'm sure you, these things have been passed you before in other, other municipalities, et cetera.
Certainly, yeah. And I, I, we will add some recommendations in the plan. But there is something to having that diversity of businesses that are open at the same time that draws interest. So that you're not just going to one place. You're maybe stopping by and you're going to a couple places that evening to enjoy a nice night.
And we've had, we've had, you know, a lot of these, a lot of these restaurants we've had, and we haven't had a lot of them, but they're open at the same time. They have a diverse, different type of menus, et cetera. It's, it's just that people, for some reason, we have to go to Madison. I don't know why. Because we have had some really wonderful establishments here. And we just, I don't know how to get the community to, to grasp that.
One little anecdote story that I heard as far as just people getting awareness of spaces and understanding what businesses are downtown. I think it was at the, maybe the downtown business owner session, they were talking about the downtown trick-or-treat. That, you know, folks do with the preschool or like this year, book, kids were off school on Halloween. And so I saw a ton of parents down there with kids trick-or-treating in the morning and, in the rain and everything. But the business owner said, there was a lot of people they, you know, never seen before. They said, I didn't even know we had a jewelry store or a chocolate shop. Or, you know, I didn't know what the relaxation destination was. It was, you know, confusing. Or I'd never been down here during the daytime when you've been open. And so just seeing what was inside, inside there, you know, a lot of these people that have lived here for years. It sounded like, got a chance to discover it just because they happened to be downtown on a weekday.
This is kind of off the wall and maybe off subject, but why, you know, can we put out a, not a newsletter, but something that, something about the village. Hey, here's what we have in the Village of Oregon. And have names of businesses and where they're located and what they do.
Everyone gets mailed a community guide every year. The Chamber does a great job with those. But I, you know, maybe tie in some of the event recommendations that we got and heard from the community. Maybe it's more than just trick-or-treating, but other, you know, shop, small business Saturday events, or, you know, ladies' night out or other things that other communities do. So that people get other opportunities and maybe beyond the typical hours of operation. I think definitely heard from some people, like, there's no way we would ever be open, you know, a Tuesday night during the summer concerts. Why not? You know, you've got all these people right here.
Well, you'll find too, if you go to, even if you go to Madison, other, other municipalities, and I've been other, other towns and other things. Nine o'clock at night sometimes, it's, it's amazing, you know, it closes down. It's not like it was when I was younger. Unless you're a student downtown, that's different. Yeah, I don't know if, I didn't, you said we have something that comes out every year that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, I think the community guide typically gets mailed out. They, they may have stopped doing the mailing to every resident, but they're available at the grocery store. A lot, the hotels, other places, but it's a, you know, kind of bound.
It's embarrassing that I don't know that.
They're right outside the chamber if you want to grab one on your way out.
Yeah, thank you. I've only been here for forty-seven years.
Yeah, it's that calendar.
Okay, thank you. But yeah, it'd be nice if we just even do something a little more flashy. I don't know, just, I just. You can tell I'm not happy people leave this town. They should, they should take care of our resident businesses. They need to be here. That's my speech. Okay, go ahead. Anybody else? Any questions? It's a wonderful presentation, by the way. Thank you very much.
It's been really fun working with your community.
Looking forward to your final report.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, hopefully, I think, probably aiming for December or maybe January for kind of a final review draft of the report and then adoption. Sometimes in that window as well. Thanks ladies for coming tonight.
Yep, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to Item Seven B, which is for discussion. It's the conceptual review of plans for proposed commercial buildings and down, and townhome developments at one zero four two Park Street. Applicant is Kramer Development and Ursa Builders. Anybody here to present that? Come on up and tell us who you are and give us your ID, what you're doing, because I have questions. I think Mr. Beano had some questions also, did he?
Yep, I'll put my John hat on if some of his comments are mentioned.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Kramer with Kramer Development.
Just Brad Bird with Ursa Builders.
Okay.
We're a commercial developer based in Middleton and typically do retail development. Haven't worked in Oregon before, but done work in most of the communities around here. So I have the property under contract from Max Creek. And the plan you have in front of you is one of the options we put together. It has a small retail building that fronts on Park Street. And then the townhome development that goes to what's this, Concord, Concord Drive in the back. So the first plan that you see here, that building's four to five thousand square feet. And main access point off of Park Street. The south side has a drive-through for a food use. You can see the red cars in line there. And the building would really, really front on the parking lot side. So you have doors and windows facing Park Street, but most of your customers would come in, park in the, in the back, and then walk in kind of that main entrance.
This is, I'm sorry to interrupt you, this is
Between the hotel and
South of, south of Max Creek.
Yep, right across the street from Callers.
It's a, it's a narrow site, kind of long and deep. So that building, typically with retail buildings, we kind of get maxed out at like sixty, sixty-five feet in depth to keep like a twenty-foot storefront. So that's what's kind of driving the size of that building. And then a lot of the types of tenants we would work with, you know, like to have a drive-through or a pickup window or something like that. So we're showing that on the south side. That building could be two or three tenants, no more than three based on the size of it. And then I can let you discuss the townhome side.
Sure.
Sure, so, I mean, with what was left on that lot, you know, we took the building envelope, uh I guess to be the front side. And we put, we were able to fit six townhomes in that, I I mean, not saying that. We're not flexible on that, but we were just utilizing the space that was left and so.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're confusing me a little bit, sorry to interrupt.
So we don't have a plan, we don't, there's no site plan that shows the townhomes.
So, right, so I guess that kinda shows it the best straight there, that that remainder of the space right there.
Okay, so there's basically two. Buildings, sites, et cetera, there's a townhome site and there's the other building site.
Yeah, the next agenda item is the CSM we proposed, so that takes this lot, breaks into two lots and then. Creates the Max Creek lot, cuz right now it's all just one property. You'll see a three lot CSM that.
All right, got it.
Yeah, and and I should've mentioned that driveline that comes in, we're proposing it connect Park Street and Concord Drive. Uh and then the townhome development would take access off of that drive, um and they would lay out kind of along the south property line there.
Okay, got it. I'm sorry you're wrapped, go ahead.
Oh, you're fine.
Can can I ask why you chose not to show the townhomes on this? Just because you're a separate developer?
No, no, no reason, I mean, um we had this plan put together by our architect and Ursa was doing. Their schematic to try to fit everything on that full site, so we just didn't have a chance to combine them.
He just kinda came in on the backside here.
By looking on this, you can kinda, as you showed me on there, you can.
Yeah, I I inferred after looking at it, that that's where they would go, but.
Would the townhomes be um like a garage entry or would there be an alley behind, would they be kind of rear loaded?
Well, I think if you if you go to, it it would be a garage.
Okay, in the front.
Yep, yep, so.
At great, at great, not below.
Correct.
Okay.
And how many units for these townhomes, what's the square footage?
Six, oh. You had it, you had it written down, didn't you, not in your presentation?
There was six units in total, two stories and they average twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Right, yep.
Right, so that's that's more of the upstairs right there.
Okay, there it is, I'm sorry. Four bedrooms, which I was surprised, but yeah. Eighteen hundred square feet, which, yeah, okay. Questions, anybody?
Uh, just a couple of comments, I guess, I I chuckle because I misread your plan originally without the townhomes. And I thought it was flipped and I'm like, why would you put townhomes and have all these cars driving back to get to the business, right? Then after relooking at it before tonight's meeting, I realized, okay, the business faces Park Street, townhomes are on the back, so so that makes sense. I don't have a problem with that, my initial concern and somewhat still a little bit of concern is. Coming out of the townhome garage into that drive alley. Little bit of concern there, but I realize it's not a ton of traffic, the the majority of the traffic's coming off of park to serve the business, so.
Yeah, you were anticipating access both Concord and park from this.
I don't have a problem with your business plan, uh I like that you put the business up to the street front and put the parking behind. Uh so, yeah, I mean, I kinda like to see the whole site together, you know, what the townhomes actually look like and. I realize this is just conceptual anyhow, so.
We look at a certified survey that they're gonna be talking about next, it helps, which I didn't do, I did, but I didn't.
You didn't read your packet?
It's in my packet, I know, I'm the only guy that gets the hard copies, you know, I can do a computer, I can.
It was in your yearly flyer, right?
Yeah, it was in the mailing that you didn't get, the community guide. Nice one, he was, he was listening.
Everybody else uses computers and I got the all the hard copies up here. All right, I I and I, looking for comments? Yeah?
So, I'm with.
You go ahead.
So, John Bano is our vice chair for planning commission, he is on a hunting trip this week, but he um is our resident architect on the. On the um planning commission, he had a couple of comments, and actually, interestingly, Patrick, they were. A little bit different than yours, I was um curious if you guys were gonna be on the same page here, but he thought that the building up near the street, which. Is actually kind of what we are trying to aim for in a lot of our, just like, kind of main corridor, uh entry corridor development, he felt it was pretty out of place with. Just where Max Creek and the hotel are, they are set back with the parking in front, and he felt like it kinda feel like. Sticking out like a sore thumb, just kind of interrupting that rhythm of where the buildings on the that side of the street have been, um he he kinda proposed. If you think you've got three sort of sections of your, you know, you've got. First bank of parking, the middle bank of parking, then the building, he actually proposed maybe move, switch the building in the middle bank of parking so that there's some parking in front. Some parking in back, um but the building kinda sitting more in the middle, so it's a little. I guess better aligned um with where those other buildings are, maybe. Three rows of parking need to be up front and one row in back, I. Can see the argument for both options, and I think maybe having screening in front and other things like that could help if there was more parking in front to make it feel a little bit less. Suburban there, but that was John's comment, just passing that on, um he also felt that the the dedicated drive-through lane. Was a lot of pavement for something that might not be used on a regular basis, and he was curious if you've done other designs where. I mean, I get that you don't wanna have backup parking while people are trying to leave a parking lot, but depending on the size of this use, you know, how many. Cars at a given point are really gonna be queued up there, um so that was just kind of a question he had, is is there a different way to make sure that. To maybe not have just that dedicated, all that pa- pavement for something that may only have, you know, one, two cars in there on a regular basis. Um, he was also not a fan of the drive aisle going all the way through to Concord. Um, he felt that there should be kind of a separation, it's just people accessing the commercial site. And then the townhomes accessed off Concord and have to, you know, have a space between those two drives and that um. I know it's probably not on this plan, but there's a sidewalk for the folks that live at the Rosewood Apartments there, um but that kinda connects to the hotel and out to Park Street too. So people wanted to watch Culvers or something like that, they wouldn't have to, they could obviously kinda cut through the lot, but if they wanted to take more of a pedestrian route. That's already kind of on that site and so um. I kind of agree with that, I mean, just for neighborhood connectivity, yeah, it's always nice when things go through, but. I don't really know though, it's pretty low traffic, you know, as far as how much cut through there might be, other people that live on Concord. That might cut out to Park Street to get to Jamesville rather than go out to Wolf Street.
Is there a reason why you want that complete drive-through? And I I see John's point, you. And I don't know what it would do to your, to your uh townhouses, but you know, in the ingress and egress, but you got Concord Drive there.
Right, it it may be better to to shut that off.
I know you guys are doing it for convenience, maybe, but um you're you're commenting about.
Yeah, that's one thing to look at, maybe um, you know, if you guys put a site plan together, it has both on there, we can um take a look with the. The fire district too and see if maybe the length of your drive aisle isn't uh long enough that they would have to have like a full turnaround, they might just be able to. Access everything off Concord Drive if they had to serve or pull in and back out or something, so um maybe there's. Some different options, we can get some thoughts from them on that, and if it triggers a whole hammerhead turnaround, it may not make sense.
No, I'm I'm not a registered architect.
It could also be something where it's uh like we have this in um Highlands of Netherwood, those homes that are across from the park, the. Kind of small alley-loaded lots where uh it's like chained in between, so it's just more for emergency access if they need to. Get through with a big.
Sure.
Um fire truck or something like that, but typically people are either going to Concord for the townhomes or they're just staying kind of come in.
So really, we're still in the conceptual, so really, I don't, what, the bottom line is, I don't think we're having any objection from anybody that can see that that objects to. To uh the concept, it's just a matter of how we get there.
I think it's some good feedback, for sure.
Yeah, oh yeah, and it's um and giving some thought, I guess a preliminary thought is that maybe John's comment was good. It may be nice to divide the two parcels, if you wanna call it that, you know, the ones are commercial and ones are resident. It's you guys, it's up to you, it's your decision, but um.
Could we discuss the uh building placement a little further? We we have a plan, I think, that shows the building pushed back, you can see the front of Max Creek.
Yeah.
It's kinda near where that dimension is pulled off of that roadway.
Sure.
We have a plan that shows that, I think uh Elise is right, we need to either keep two or three rows of parking up front. Um because that will then be the front entrance of these spaces, um and so you could have some staff parking in the back.
Yes.
That will have just like a single mandory to kinda get in, but it's hard to put the building, you know, halfway and have parking on each side for.
I think the idea was John's comment too, is to simply move that, because you've got the other two, the the hotel and you've got Max Creek. Are set back farther, and now you've got this other building set up towards the front of the lot.
Same thing with Culvers across the street, there's obviously parking along, you know, in front and then the building is up along.
Yeah, so that would be more attractive to to me.
I would rather do that as well, it um then presents more of a strong front door to Park Street.
Right.
Cuz a lot of these tenants end up, you know, filming the back door, that's their kitchen, whatever it is, so now you don't, you have kind of a blank space, which is unintended, but that's what happens. So if we can make the building more active and more visible, even though it's pushed off the street, that tends to be more attractive.
Well, parking lot like that will make it look more.
Right.
You know, active and stuff, so, okay.
On your next concept plan, we'd also like to see um like a dumpster corral, if there's where that would be, any snow storage and then um.
And John's gonna wanna see where your mechanicals are.
Your mechanical, yeah, and.
You have any rooftops?
Bike parking, basically whatever kind of requirement for for vehicles, it's about ten percent. Um the number of spaces for bike parking, so just kinda where you would lay some of that stuff out, landscaping, base, you know, basic ideas on where that might go. Um.
The uh trying to utilize that drive-through lane as a dual function where you have, you know, non-customers going around it. Uh we'd have to add a separate kind of bypass once you get to where that red car is essentially, which then knocks down the size of that building. Um that's why we didn't do it, we ha- we have a case that we just built recently where we have that, but the width of that site is quite a bit wider. Um so that's why we kinda kept it as a dedicated lane and with the with the tenants that would go into that space, you probably have like. An eight-car stack from like an order board to the window, um and they won't allow us to intermix, you know, non-customer traffic through that.
Right. Well, nobody's objecting, you just gotta do a little more work.
I think it's a nice, uh it's another example of kind of a underutilized space, but it's an acre lot that is. Right next to a lot of really active commercial and then, you know, on Concord side too, there's a lot of townhomes, condos, duplexes, other things. That are kind of in that mid-density range, so um I think it would fit in nicely with that neighborhood.
Okay.
I like the the mixture of the residential and the commercial and that were be, and accordingly, we're able to see. How the whole finished plan looks now, one part now, one part five years from now, so appreciate that too.
All right, thanks for your feedback, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You're still involved in the next thing here too, so. Review, item seven C, a review and possible recommendation, village board certified survey map of ten forty-two Park Street applicant Kramer Development. Do you have any comments, Elise, about?
Uh, no, the letter from Rupert Milky, that was their original letter, but all the um the comments have been addressed, so.
They have all been addressed.
Yes. So the only thing is just that landowners, um the closing won't happen until um the CSM is recorded, correct? So then you're just buying your lot.
Yep.
Not Max Creek's as well, um I think that's the only outstanding item.
So, the only thing is that you're a very reputable person, but you're telling me that's all been addressed, so how do we know that?
I can pull up the email if you like, but um yeah, no, typically I don't get a um, or if I get a comment letter that just says. All items are addressed, I think it's after the.
We could, yeah, you're right, we could, Scott, you're right, we can do that, so I just be snotty. No, I I wanna make sure because just in case if somebody questions it.
Yep.
All right, that's a great idea, Scott, so everything's been addressed, so everything's in line, so. We need a recommendation to village board, approval of certified survey map contingent upon uh the final addressing of all comments by Rupert Milky. Is that correct? We have a motion then by Scott, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, anybody, and any discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Posed, motion carries, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We're good. No other public appearances or new business, excuse me, uh community, a director of community development report.
All right, um so Lauren's here, if you guys have any questions on um some public works projects, I know there's a couple of things ongoing and out to bid. Run down the list of those major public projects, if you guys have any questions, we can divide conquer.
All right, I apologize, I'm finding a little bit of a cold, um so please ask if anything's unclear. I'll start with uh some of our private development, um cuz I'm guessing that's of interest. We are starting to wind down on two of our bigger projects, Greenview Preserve Phase Two, we're moving towards acceptance of the utilities. Uh we're doing the same at Autumn Ridge Phase Three, we'll continue to work with them uh towards the the goal of getting acceptance of the streets as well. But that'll come a little bit later, on the Highlands, the west side of the village, uh the Highlands Phase Four has kicked off and um they are. Focusing right now on Denmark Circle, they'll go after Peterson Trail, the Peterson Trail portion of Phase Four next year. But our engineers are out and watching as they're getting into the utility portion of that. Um the Flats is nearing completion out that direction, so we are starting to, like I said, wrap up for the year. On the public side, really what we're focusing on right now is major utility facility projects, so. We have bid and accepted a bid and are moving towards construction on the Well Three Rehabilitation Project that you guys have seen. Next week will be the first ad for the Well Six project, so that is moving forward and then December fifth. Will be the first ad for the wastewater treatment plant Phase One Improvements Project. So those will all be coming back around for approval, hopefully in early to mid-January next year. Um kind of while we're doing all of this, our major street project for next year is North Oak Street. From East Lincoln Street all the way down to Brook Street and then with some sanitary sewer replacement between Brook and Park Street over. Over by the police department, so that'll be a major project with a lot of coordination with the district and with Summerfest. Um with the Oregon Kids Triathlon and with all of our emergency services, so we've started those conversations. And um mostly they've been going really well and we think we have a plan, so. We will be moving towards bidding that in January and likely starting that up in the spring and hitting it as hard as we can to finish it by the time school starts in the fall.
I'm trying to envision on Oak Street, is it that bad of shape or is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I drive down and I didn't pay attention, so I guess that's how I got here, um okay, and the wastewater treatment plant, obviously, that's, I used to do that. What what are we doing?
So we are essentially replacing, upgrading our entire liquid side process at the wastewater treatment plant. So everything from the intake structure all the way through the uh UV, new UV disinfection right before it goes into. We don't, so this will be new, um this was really a credit to the friends of Badfish Creek. Who have been monitoring this creek for quite a while and brought us some really good data about why it was important that the UV be included. In this Phase One and um and it it was great, so we did include it and and that'll be part of this, so. It's gonna be about a two-year project, we're really excited for it.
Primaries and secondary clarifiers and all that count.
Brand new clarifiers, um the domes, the silver domes are going away, so.
I know it's expensive, I wish I would still work as a contractor.
Maybe Greg can get a tour.
Well, yeah, I could, I could give you a tour, the UV, it's interesting, cuz that's what Madison Met does for their. Which is for Badfish, everything comes out of there, it's all UV and it has to stay covered for X number of minutes or hours before. So the bugs all pass away.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful, exciting, thanks so much, I'm sorry.
Only other um product update I wanted to give you, obviously, you heard the downtown master plan, so that'll be, we'll be wrapping that up December, January here, um. Um, there's the two outstanding, uh, zoning text amendments still, the chicken and beekeeping and then, um, concealed passengers. So, um, planning on coming back to the December meeting, uh, probably with Sonia on an update, um. And that we won't have like a public hearing and text ready to go yet, but just a summary of what we heard. We had on, um, I think it was two weeks ago tonight, we had our. Community conversation about chicken and beekeeping and had about a dozen folks come that were, um, had a lot of good opinions to share and. Worked well together and kind of small groups and then came back and reported out and also gotten a lot of emails, um. And phone calls as well from people, so I've sent that all to the end wall to help collate all that information and then, um, come back with some recommendations. But have been learning a lot and I think, um, hopefully building some good relationships with the community as well, so. Um, we will give that update and then hopefully get some direction from you guys as to what we want to, um. Incorporate.
Who's our consultant on the, on the wastewater?
That's Town and Country Engineering.
Good choice.
Yes, they are.
I don't, I didn't, I had no involvement with that much ever, just so you know. Excellent company. Great, okay.
We got a volunteer for a project manager down there.
Well, I always, I always think it's paid a lot. But yeah, that may be fun, actually. Okay, all that, upcoming dates, I guess you just put them on it because you want us to all make sure we knew when, is that it?
That's right.
It's always the first Thursday unless there's something special and you let us know. And in this case, it's, it's every Wednesday. Uh, except for the tenth, uh-huh, of July, got it. Okay. There we go. Thanks very much. We need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. It was a good meeting. Thank you.